Next item is minutes.
Who it?
Second.
Discussion, all is in paper.
Aye.
Both? Motion carries. Next item is business discussion and action on reserve program.
Motion.
Uh, discussion. Go ahead, Doc. Was any board want to speak first?
I think, I think we're basically waiting on some movement from you at this point.
Okay, let's call the motion. I've moved to limit the size of the reserve at thirty. In part through chapter ABD one, statute number four of the reserve peace officer.
Let's second that.
Dave, I don't know if you can second that motion. I mean, uh, you are an employee of the jail over there, so if you like, essentially you're lost in your motion. Should allow someone else to do that. Got a conflict?
I disagree.
Okay. No problem?
Ultimately, it's up to Dave to determine whether he believes he has a conflict or not.
The reserve program has nothing to do with where I work with corrections. You guys discovered last week that corrections cannot be a reserve officer. And a reserve officer is only going to be paid a dollar a year. It's not like we're going to be voting on salaries for these individuals.
Okay. Any other discussion? Uh, JP, up? Did you have something?
Right now, your reserves, you have eight officers, volunteers who are certified. I talked to Todd and I talked with other people. Uh, you had three in the past who were kind of grandfathered in over the years thinking that they didn't have to go through certification and had been a reserve for many years. But they've been told by the administration now they have to start all over as a new applicant. So they'll be going through the whole process like anybody else, and I think there's three other applicants waiting in the wings. What sticks along with this process, and I want everybody here to understand this, it's not the responsibility of these boards that they've been stoneroil in that we're sitting on it. It's taken that long getting information on Iowa code, conversations between the sheriff's department, conversations and meetings we've had with federal labor law officials, trying to pull everybody together through their schedules or vacations. That's taken three to four weeks. I've got a staff member here that's been working on it, and she, she'll back any statement that's made. So it's not been that problem. The problem's been, we do have a sheriff that brought this forward, but he's the first sheriff in my sixteen years working here that brought it before the board of supervisors. The other past administrations, it was either a secret or it was something they didn't want to talk about, so the board didn't even know about it. Thank God we didn't have any major incidents which caused the county problems. Because you found out the liability, the work comp is all a very expensive item to the taxpayer, to the county, and it could really hurt. But I think everybody on the board wants to see a reserve program. And I think everybody should see a reserve program because it's valuable. And I've learned that from working with sheriff's department and working with you, the board. But it's taken this long for this to happen. No fault of anybody. I just want that to be on the record, because we're saying why it took them so long. You've got to go through the facts, you've got to have all the information presented to you. That's what you hire departments to do. But it's time to get it come to a conclusion that it's not going to be anything, any good for morale of the departments, with the public, with the board. Your concern is for the betterment of the taxpayers and being good providers of services to the public. Volunteers are a great resource. So, Matt Todd wants to say.
Anyone else wish to hear? Uh, can you make a friendly motion, amend the decision?
You can just amend the motion.
I would amend the motion fifteen instead of thirty. There was a discussion about increasing it gradually. And, uh, that's what I'm thinking.
I'll second that motion. Uh, the reason is, is that I, I think, you know, thirty is too much to start out with. We've gone through a big process here with information gathering. Uh, I think we can integrate, you know, a number of fifteen better than we can thirty. Um, I just think that, uh, with the information we have and with the existing volunteers that you have, uh, that, that this means that it's going to increase it up to about twenty, about twenty-three to twenty-four people once you get all these folks, uh, brought in. So that's a pretty good number.
Okay, so just, just so, just so I'm clear, you're, you're adding fifteen on top of the numbers that he's already?
Eight that, I think, eight that, isn't that correct?
Was that?
That we have, but did he?
You have eight now.
That's my.
I second it, give the amendment.
That wasn't his motion.
His motion, his amendment was two fifteen.
Two fifteen total? Wow. Well, I, um, I was not including.
I, I would like to go on the record to say that the more you chop this up, the more expensive it's going to be for us to train these people. We're prepared to train thirty right now, and the more you chop it up.
Excuse me. Did you second this motion?
I second it, I, I misunderstood. I thought it was fifteen new people. Fifteen new volunteers.
You did, you did. You did.
I just have to understand what is, what is the motion was?
Yeah.
My motion was to increase the reserves to fifteen.
A total of fifteen, including the, the eight that you could, they currently have?
But basically doubling the size.
Right, basically doubling the size.
Oh, okay, alright.
Tony Winger, I just want to make a statement. You're talking about the numbers, and I want you guys to be clear. You say thirty. The most anybody's going to be working would be two, unless it's, unless it's Saturday in the park and we have three or four working the street corner. But it's not like we're going to put thirty people out on the street. We're looking at that number because that's a good class to train, and that's a good pool to draw from. We have thirty volunteers that, hey, we need somebody, and like Sheriff Drew said last week, have other lives, vacations, and all that going on. It's hard to get one or two people when we need them. Thirty would be our pool to train, have them ready to go. But we're not putting thirty new deputy, or new reservists out on the street.
How, how long will it take you to train those thirty people if this motion does pass?
They've, they've got modules they have to go through, and I don't have a specific.
It would, it would be six months of training just through the modules, but then we have hours that they have to complete through a field training program on top of that, and I, I think, do we settle on a hundred hours?
Uh, a hundred to a hundred and fifty.
Hundred, a hundred and fifty, where they're riding right next to a deputy. So, and then when, when we have a fully trained reservist saying, okay, you're, you're good to go, we're not putting thirty out there. It's going to be one, possibly two, that would be coming out and working.
So it sounds like it's going to take, in the training process, at least, at least nine to twelve months?
Oh, at least. These people, they're telling us when they can do their training time, when they're riding. If we, we can't assign them because they have their lives to go, they'll call us and say, can I do four hours tonight? Fine deputy, you can go do, do four hours.
But, but to reiterate, it's much easier to train all thirty of them during that nine month period than it would be to do fifteen now, fifteen later, because then I just, it becomes an issue of trying to schedule the training, get the instructors there, and, um, I mean, it becomes a bigger headache.
I'm realistic, like, just to clarify, you train thirty, you're only going to put fifteen out on?
There's not going to be fifteen out on the street at one time. There's going to be, we hope to have thirty reservists that we can say, hey, we need somebody, and I, and we may burn through twenty of them to find one person that can, can do it.
Help with whatever we need that particular time. Uh, I think at the most, since I've been with the sheriff's office for twenty-three years, at the most I've ever seen working at one time, probably five or six.
And that's at the fair, and that's at Saturday in the park where there's other deputies around too, to work out on patrol with a deputy there. You're going to talk, you're talking with one guy.
How long have you had five to six reservists though? I mean, we've only had that.
I'm, I'm talking in past years, when we used to have numbers like forty and so forth. I'm not talking recent.
I was going to say, because I, the last ten or fifteen years.
Twenty years ago when I came on the fair, they, there'd be eight, eight reservists walking around out, out at the fair. And that, we haven't seen that in years.
Just because there hasn't been?
Those numbers, yeah, people available to go.
James in Brooklyn, taxpayer research council, I just have a question on this topic. Is it cheaper, or more cost efficient to actually train thirty reservists at once than to do a class of fifteen now and fifteen next year?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
That's why we're asking for them.
Now, are we talking class training? Because before you said it was, they get four hours here, four hours there, that's riding with an officer. Do you have actual classes that you're going to have?
That would all, that would all be at the beginning through their modules, then, like Lieutenant Winger mentioned, once they're through their modules and they've completed, satisfactorily completed those, then they would go through an FTO program where we would get them in a car with a deputy, or, or maybe two reservists with a deputy at a time to get them through their FTO program. That's something that would all come at the end of the training program.
Larry, look at it like, our rookies down at the academy right now, they've been down there since April, they graduate in August, that was, it's fourteen weeks, that would be, they're going through their modules right now. When they come back to us here in, in first of August, now they have another four months every day that they're going through their FTO program. The reservists, their modules are their academy. When they get done with that, great, you're, you're, you have your modules done, but now we're going to take you out, keep an eye on you, see how you do in the real world. And that's, I mean, that's how we train.
What's the cost to train? I mean, the, what can calculate that out, to train a class of? A class?
For the modules?
Yeah, for the modules.
A lot of our instructors are going to do it on their work hours, or the reserve program pays them to come teach the, the modules. As far as when they come off the deputy, it's, the deputies are already working there.
Already working.
I guess the modules is what I.
Right. The, this, a lot of the training, a lot of the module training will be done through, uh, our instructors will be paid through the reserve programs fund.
And we have deputies that are, have already switched their shifts so they can come train, taking part of the shift as they're training there, because they want these guys to get, to get through.
And the other thing is, you're two fifteen on physical now, so the cost of reserve fund you have, they work.
Um, that's something that we'd have to, uh, look at.
Well, the way it was done in the past, as far as I'm knowledgeable of, is that they, the reservists paid upfront, and then at the end of the year, you were reimbursed.
Right, they were reimbursed for it.
Is that what the plan is?
I believe so, yes, I believe that's what.
That's what we talked about.
The sheriff has talked, talked about doing.
Clearly, I have a better understanding of what the training is now, so I might have to withdraw my second to your amendment. Okay.
Set at fifteen?
Mr. Chairman, may I say, speak?
Come up here.
Ask Clark, both of us.
Thank you.
Why did, are they not a danger, Mr. Clausen?
No, we're not.
To, uh, Mr. Clausen's amendment to the motion to, amendment to come at fifteen.
Mr. Clausen has the opportunity to ask the number of seconds, or he could ask the body to draw the motion.
May I ask the body to draw my motion?
And we're back on a new motion.
Okay. Uh, my name is Jim Marshall, I, I've got a, a question and maybe a statement. Uh, these gentlemen are asking for thirty reservists. And I, in my mind, I think the reason they're asking for that many is so that the events that they have, from what I understand, are not that many where they need the reservists. What they want to do is keep their time below the nine hours, so the county don't have to pay any salaries. But they have these people to draw upon, and they're trained if and when they need ten. They're still not going to run over the nine, is it the nine hours a month that they're?
Yes.
Don't they?
We don't want to burn people out, so.
Not only that, but they don't want to cost the county any money either.
No, there, there is no pay.
I understand that, I understand that. Up to the nine hours, there's no pay. And what I'm saying is, that's why they're asking for the thirty and to get them trained, so that they have that pool to draw from. So that, say they only use four in a month. So they'll use four others the next month or some other event. They're not using the full thirty, and they're keeping the hours at nine hours a month. So they're still a volunteer. And there was a concern over the issue of volunteer and employee, you had that, George.
Oh, yeah, I did.
And if they keep those hours below nine, then they're still a volunteer.
Well, I understand that better now, but Mr. Wick, you guys, uh, you know, explained that in having, uh, a little larger pool, if you will, of volunteers that you can draw from when you have these various activities, because you do have a situation and a problem when you have volunteers, and I'm used to having those too, of who's going to be available at those various times.
That's right.
You're absolutely right.
Thank you.
They have to do nine hours, is that the minimum, or is that?
That's the maximum, they don't have to do nine hours, that's what we ask of them.
Yeah, we're required that they, they try to get to nine hours a month to stay active. We don't want somebody to do one month and not come back for six months. You'd be out of keeping a curve.
But the nine hour, the nine hours might not necessarily be a function of the public, it would be training or something we might have them doing.
If, if this board would agree to the third, it's not a guarantee, then all thirty are going to make it through the program, correct?
Correct.
Because they have to do the training, they have to pass everything they can.
If they can't make it through the training, or they decide once they're in it, they're not interested in doing it anymore, there could be any number of reasons why. And then we would go, have to go back out and start recruiting people again.
Do we know what that would do to our, our comp, right, it's thirty, if we don't, we won't know about it until we've done it?
They'll do an audit approximately every three to four months, if they have to, actual, accurate time records, they'll send out an audit person, see the hours they've worked, they have a formula, and then that's additional work comp money that has to be paid. One of the big engagements with reserves, even though they're a valuable program, is if you have a reservist who maybe makes a hundred thousand dollars a year in their private job, and they get hurt with a severe injury, that workman's compensation rating is not based on what they would have been making as a deputy, it's what they would have been making off their regular employment. That's where we've been warned that this could be a jeopardy to our work comp dollars for the whole county. That's just a fact, if they were sustained.
Well, I'd like to offer, if you have another, if I'm like, amendment, that would be to set the number at twenty-five, the sheriff said last night, he thought he would be able to do, um, work with that money, that would, that would be reasonable, just to, just to see how it goes. I personally, you know, would have done fifteen, that's what I came in today thinking, maximum. But I understand the training, and I hate to take an officer off duty to continue to do training, because I realize it's during there when they should, you know, or could be out patrolling, so, um, maybe I'll second, set twenty-five.
Why would you, if you were to take, possibly don't all make it, why would you cut that down?
Because they can always list, firmly recruit into them.
Why not?
They can always, I mean, that's the maximum, if they don't have, they can turn around and.
I'm going to second Jackie's motion, because the audit is made, whatever, it's what you have to do, or especially one.
Could you repeat the motion?
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five total? Or twenty-five more?
Just set the number at twenty-five, Jim.
Oh.
The sheriff said last week he would be willing to phase in, and twenty-five was reasonable to him, so.
Yep, my name's Josh Hallwell, I live in Sergeant Bluff, I'm one of the candidates for the reserve program. Um, I am currently a full-time employee of a private business, um, and I am also a volunteer at Sergeant Bluff Fire Department. Uh, the community of Sergeant Bluff is not very large. Uh, we have thirty-some volunteers there of just firefighters. Um, if we're worried about work comp and liability and all this and that, um, you know, firefighter, I don't know about you, but every day a firefighter gets called, it's an emergency and it's a hazardous environment. Uh, if a community which, in Woodbury County, are you guys aware of how many volunteer fire departments you have in Woodbury County? Maybe all of them but Sioux City, right?
All towns outside of.
Everybody but Sioux City? And Sioux City started out as a volunteer fire department. So, uh, as a volunteer, I don't see there being, you know, any more of a liability associated just because you're a volunteer. If, uh, you know, if, if, if you have a reserve program, take for instance the shooting that we had with the Sioux City police officer in, in Sioux City, uh, reserve deputies could have been called in to create a, a cordenary around there to allow paid police officers to do the investigation. Would have also given you resources to supply your police officers that are out there getting paid and limit them in, in, uh, the exposure to the environment, because it really, you know, it was really hot that day, there were a lot of police officers that were pulled out of offices and maybe not dressed for being out in the environment. They could have provided them with water and whatnot, because I have heard from quite a few officers that they had issues that day with, with that, nobody knowing exactly where everybody was at and getting resources to them, but that would be a perfect use for reserve officers.
I think we did use a reserve, didn't you use a reserve officer?
But you might, you might have had one or two, right? To coordinate off that area, I mean. Yeah, I mean, but that's what I'm saying is, is we have, we have thirty, in Sergeant Bluff, we have thirty, I believe thirty-five straight firefighters, and then we have ten that are EMS only, so they're, they're, they only go with the ambulance, they aren't, they don't go into a, a working house fire, or a working fire. They're, they're outside only providing EMS for us, so. But, uh, like myself, I'm a firefighter and an EMT, so I, I can work both, you know, both situations, and, you know, I, I've served eight years in the military, I spent eleven months in Iraq, like fifteen months away from home training for it, so it's, you know, I mean, it's not like we're bringing, you know, somebody off the street that, that has absolutely nothing to do with it, you know. We went through, I went through a pretty detailed, um, application process with it and interview process, or whatever you want to call it, and, you know, I mean, background checks, it's not like we're, yeah, it's, it's not like we're, you know, I mean, I know there's more, more people that are like me that are military trained and are active in the military now, and people that have, you know, it's not like it's, it's just somebody wants to get off their Xbox and go do something. It's, you know, I mean, I, I, they're, they're, they're not, they're not trying to get everybody, they're just trying to get select few that they think would fit the job. And I think if you have more, more volunteers, like you were saying, it's easier to train thirty people, because if you train, say you train fifteen, and only five of the fifteen pass all the tests, pass all the classes. So now you have five people that are advanced, and you have to bring another group of ten people in to fill in that gap, and then you got to start over. Now you have to have either two separate classes, or you have to pay another instructor, or have another instructor teach that second group. And for all of Woodbury County, I think fifteen is too few. I mean, the thirty, I think, would be, is a good number to start at, but it's just, you know, it's better to have them and not need them than to need them and not have them. And if they're volunteers, so they get trained. There's no liability when they're sitting at home or they're at their other job. There's no liability when they're, you know, not being used. But when they're being used, then they're a liability. And I'd much rather have, as a, as a Woodbury County, you know, taxpayer that has to pay for it, I'd much rather have a, a reserve deputy that is fresh than maybe having a salary or a career deputy that maybe is burned out because he's been working a lot of hours because of a, some sort of a special event, or something happens, you know, who knows what, you know, and, and have him be out there not at his peak, you know, and maybe needs to take a couple hour break where a reserve deputy could come in and give him a break and let him go home and shower and do whatever he needs to do. I mean, it's, it's just, we're there to be used, you know, more along the lines of being, like abused, but not really, you know, it's, it's, we're there to give the career deputies a, a break, so that they can make the good decisions that they need to make. So I just wanted to say my piece. Thanks.
Good piece. Oh, we have a, we have a, oh, we got one more.
Yeah, Mike Peters with the UFCW. I've been listening for three or four weeks, and the first gentleman that spoke this morning probably made more sense than all of them. He said it took us over three or four weeks to get stuff done because of people's schedules, getting the information and people's schedules. This reservist program to me is important. I would hope that you turned down Jackie's amendment and accept Mark's for two reasons. One is, the people you get as reservists are going to be just like the guy that just spoke. They're young people, they probably have kids at home, they got full-time jobs, and when you need them the most is when they're going to be busy, because it's volunteer. We need them in the summer times, the way it sounds, that's Rivercade, that's all the cities that have their dances, it's the Rivercade, the Saturday in the parks, that's when you need those reservists, and that's when those people, because their kids are out of school, are going to be on vacation, are gone. Again, I'd hope you turned down Jackie's amendment and accept Mark's and get on with the business of this county. Thank you guys very much.
Hi, I'm Jim Bishop. I was in the reserve program, I was nineteen ninety-seven reserve peace officer, award winner. It's an important program, I think you maybe ought to half the baby. When I was in the program, we had three different departments. There was the basic squad, all they did was train. There was advanced squad, once they made it there, they were able to move up to certified. Three different sections. We had four different squads, uh, squad one, two, three, and four, we had sergeants, lieutenants. If people here are willing to serve, why not have some of them advanced in just training? And then set fifteen slots for certified officers, and you can always change that once they get thirty basic or people who have gone through the training program. Half the baby. Half of them, set, set the certified at fifteen and set the training at thirty, and once they're appointed in the training, then move them up, and you can determine a lower or higher number later on. Is that?
That's a new concept, so you, what you have just offered, let me see if I'm understanding, is to go ahead and do the training class of thirty, and then just certify fifteen, and then what, they wait another?
You can appoint fifteen to be certified and appoint thirty just for training, and then you can move the number up for certified if there's more, or if you need more. The sheriff would set those numbers, you'd think.
Jim, uh, why are you coming with this proposal? I mean, you were a reservist, so tell me again why you think that works?
Because when I was in the program, we had basic officers, we had, that, all they did was train. We had advanced officers, they carried everything except the firearm, but they went with the certified officers. So if you're going to appoint people, appoint thirty in a training program that they can pull if somebody leaves, if somebody goes on vacation, if somebody quits, moves. Set a number of fifteen certified officers and set a number of thirty in training.
Yeah, I, I think I get what you're talking about, but I don't think it's this worst job, my remaining sheriff.
But you have the power of appointment, so you could appoint and say fifteen for certified, and you can always move that up. If next year, if the sheriff comes to you and says fifteen's not enough, you have the power of appointment, the sheriff doesn't. That's, I don't agree with the new state law, because that's what's caused all this. The sheriff used to just be able to bring people in, and we had a program that was run better than bar none. We got awards from the state. But the sheriff now is required by state law to bring this to you, and it puts everybody in a bad position. I wish they would go back to the old program. But that would mean the sheriff was running it, and you really wouldn't know what was going on, and there never was a problem, because I know the liability's been an issue, but when Ted Palmer ran the organization, it ran like a Swiss clock.
Well, I think we got to give, whatever we do, I think we have to give the sheriff that latitude of, of, of structuring it within his own department and how the training is going to go. Uh, I'm not here again, like, it's, you know, just my remaining department at all. Uh, you know, the sheriff last week said that twenty-five would be the minimum that he could do, and I can see the economy's a major here and get. that he could do. I can see the economy is a major area and getting a large enough class to get these folks, you know, volunteers integrated into our system and get them all-trained. Uh, I would also like if this motion passes, whatever way, for a report to come back, you know, to the board and to the public on, uh, just how it's going and, and, uh, this kind of thing. Because volunteers are important and we've got a, uh, my, my concern was the liability and, and also the other concern, as far as I'm concerned, was the ongoing cost because, because there had been a suggestion that the volunteers were gonna be paid. That's why I asked the question last week. What is a reservist and what is a volunteer? And the sheriff assured us that the volunteers are not going to be paid because the county does not need ongoing, uh, costs and, and added employees to its, uh, to its, to its base.
Right, and if you set the level at fifteen for certified officers, only they would be on the street and then thirty would be in training. So you could appoint thirty officers only training and appoint fifteen to be on the street. And you could increase the fifteen to thirty, you could increase it to forty-five next year, you could increase it to a hundred. When I was in the unit, we had four squads with twenty, twenty-five people in each squad. We had sergeants, we had lieutenants, we had captains, but this has to be built up, in my opinion, slowly, gradually.
That has to be left to the sheriff.
But you have the power of appointment.
Yeah, we do.
I'm sorry.
Have you got it?
Yes. My name is Bill Brooks from Sioux City, Iowa, and I am one of the reserve candidates myself. And before you guys make a vote on numbers, I want you to keep one thing in mind. You know, if you, this is a problem or a resolution that was brought up for a problem that the county holds as, you know, lack of dollars and being able to resolve the conflict of being able to cover this county and our responsibilities to the community and to its, its citizens. And to me, this is a common sense approach on how to resolve that issue. You know, if you hired one deputy, the cost to maintain that deputy or to train them, to get them in, you're looking at roughly a hundred thousand dollars for that one man. For here, for less than a quarter of that cost, you're gaining thirty extra men at the drop of a phone call. To me, that's a common sense approach and I just hope you keep that in mind as you make your vote. Thank you.
My name's Liz Borg. I just have one thing to say. Years ago, when Ted Palmer was in charge, I was a member of his group. It was a very fine group. We covered many things. What I think you guys need to realize is this is not only a money issue or an employee issue, it's a health and safety issue for the taxpayers of this Wood, Woodbury County. I recently responded as an emergency responder, I'm a critical care paramedic and a nurse, to an area where we did not have EMS available on scene. We happened to have a deputy there. Thank God we did, it was a cardiac arrest. It's not the first time that's happened. These guys are minimal when they're staffed out in the county during their shifts. They have, I don't know how big this county is. Exactly. My point is, when you don't have that many deputies, but you have these reservists who are trained, they're also trained in EMS. We've got Sergeant Bluff guys, we have all sorts of air, people in all these county areas. We need these people. If you're out there, the fair is an extensive area. It's what, a week long? How many hours a day? You can't burn your deputies up. That's where we need the volume of these people. Not everybody can come at the drop of a hat. You need the number available to rotate these people and help. I'm just saying, it's a life and safety issue. Please consider that.
Call question. Uh, on the amendment, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
You call the regiment.
Which amendment are we voting on?
We're voting on the motion to amend the main motion. The main motion was thirty. We need Jackie, Supervisor Smiths, both of you, please, to vote.
Now we'll vote on the main motion. All those in favor of the main motion? Everybody saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed. That's a thirty?
No, 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 no.
What was the main motion?
Then amend it to twenty-five.
Okay.
So the main motion is twenty-five now?
Oh, I made the mark.
Okay, I just voted against something I voted for.
We'll vote on the main motion now, it's clarified, it's twenty-five. The thirty has been reduced by twenty-five.
We are now on the main motion.
All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Opposed?
opposed.
Hold on one. Now we need a motion on authorized member of the-
Wait a second, you guys have something to say?
Now that's total, right?
I'm sorry.
So they're actually getting seventeen more reservists on top of the eight they got?
Twenty-five total is what it was.
Total, okay.
Uh, we need a motion to second authorize a member of the reserve force upon being certified by the Iowa Law Enforcement Academy Council to carry a weapon in the line of duty only when actually as a member of the reserve force. Is there a motion?
On your section eighty?
Eighty-eight point seven.
I'd move it.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now we need a motion that a reserve peace officer be paid maximum of one dollar per year, code section eighty-eight point one and one. Is there a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Discussion.
Now, this is something that we traditionally done, this is no change in what we've done in the past.
Does it require a motion?
Records on this are scant. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Hopefully the sheriff sits and rests for a while.
I would like to, I would like to have a, a report on nine and nine months, you say it takes nine months training, back on this.
I don't know if you've ever been made aware of it, but we have identified a person that is our coordinator now for the reserve. That person will be-
Is that due to-
Reporting and we will get you.
Okay. Is that true?
Yes, yes. Thank you.
Next item, discussion, action on the county's first office of development position.
That item, uh, ladies and gentlemen, I, uh, Jackie and I had a meeting with the extension-
Hold on a second, we can't hear you very well.
On this next item, um, Jackie Smith and I had a meeting with the extension folks um, a few weeks ago and we discussed, uh, the viability of a shared economic development position with the county and also with the extension. Uh, based on our discussions with, uh, Mrs. McGill and I think Mike, I can't remember those guys' last names, but, uh, it was determined based on mutual agreement that, that, uh, this relationship formally would not work out because they were going to apply and apply for dollars from federal government to, um, uh, have this position and the position primarily would be a position to work with, with existing businesses and to have them expand and grow their existing businesses. And our, uh, position most likely would be, um, it is to bring in new businesses within Woodbury County, in the smaller communities especially, uh, working with our local Chamber of Commerce, with, uh, with other resources within the community. And, um, we just felt that there would not be enough time spent, uh, in these areas for, uh, particularly from the county side and us getting our, our money's worth and, and also getting a, a true, uh, effect in, in industrial and development within the county. Uh, this does not mean though that, that we're going to, uh, not involve extension in any discussions we have when it comes to, uh, industrial development, uh, new businesses that may be interested in Woodbury County coming into this county, uh, that we are gonna continue to have them involved because there are resources, uh, that they can apply, uh, that would create a positive, uh, environment for new businesses to come to, uh, Woodbury County. So it doesn't mean that we're not gonna be communicating and have that kind of relationship with, with the extension, but for us to invest a certain amount of our dollars into a position that we have no control of, uh, would not be, would not be good for this county as far as we're concerned.
Uh, this discussion, action, I, I don't know that we need to take action unless somebody wants to, uh, do the extension.
I would, I would say not. I mean, because it was an information item and, uh, there's no decision to be made on, on establishing a dual position with, with the extension.
Anyone wish to be heard?
I can just confirm that one of the, uh, I think one of the challenges was that Sarah's not able to work with any businesses that had less than thirty employees. And we met our local communities, a lot of, um, you know, businesses out there, or even a lot of top businesses are low programs, are often sole proprietors, and they just really were at risk of losing their funding if they expanded their scope. So it became apparent that while both, um, both of us needed to communicate more together because certainly business growth is a good way to add jobs and probably the best way. So we recognize that they were, you know, valuable, but if they just had so many confines, uh, but they were able to do it just to match where we want to go with our position.
Jameson Bruggan, taxpayers research council. I was curious what the next steps are. If this isn't gonna work out, what will you guys be looking at next? Uh, full position like you previously had?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
The law should be up there. He's hiding. Oh, okay. Right, or me? Towards the action, towards the- You're hiding, you're hiding from that.
There is a discussion, discussion, action. Mr. Dawson said that-
There's no action taken, uh, with the, uh-
You can take the action because of proposals. We received the proposals from the county extension too, so we reject that proposal.
As you folks can tell, I'm not Regina Smith.
You certainly are, bud.
I touch that. Regina called me at six o'clock last night to tell me that, uh, she had jury duties tomorrow. She had to report at eight-thirty and she was hoping they might get off, but apparently she didn't. She took all her material with her and, uh, was prepared to come over here, but she didn't make it, so I understand it. And, uh, just so you folks understand, I have not been extremely close to this project for a couple of months. I've been tied up deeply with other things. So I'm gonna try to answer questions. I brought Ms. Phillips along with me this morning and she knows a lot more about the issues here than I do. But, uh, I believe that Regina provided you all with a, uh, with a synopsis of the current costs of the jail project that you should have in your material. And, uh, what, what that has done or what has attempted to do is to show you where we stand over there at the present time in dollars. Uh, gives the amount to one point two million dollars that we were originally authorized to commit to it, the funds that have already been committed and the available funds that are remaining. And if you look down, uh, that sheet dated seven twenty-three, that's today's date, if you look down to the bottom, there's a listing in the table of what's called additional unknown costs. The work over there at the jail, actual construction work is getting started now after a long period of waiting. And, uh, there are a number of unknowns that still remain over there. Uh, we've authorized a, um, a change order for going through many of the doors and verifying their operation. Uh, it's been made clear that there may be parts and, uh, other materials that have to be replaced on those doors. Until that process is done, we won't know how much money that might take. Uh, we also realize that when we get into the process of replacing the control panels in the, um, in the, um, control rooms, natural control and secondary, uh, there may be some wiring that has to be replaced. We won't know that until those panels are removed and the new ones are, are being installed. So there are a lot of issues here that are going to come up as the construction proceeds over there at the jail. Right now, uh, right above that listing there, uh, that calls for unknown cost, uh, we look at the, uh, total of nine hundred and forty-three thousand dollars funds committed, leaving a, uh, I'm going back up towards the top of the sheet now, leaving two hundred and fifty-six thousand some dollars uncommitted at this point. In order to give you a little bit of history here, I was more fully involved with this project. When the bids for the jail remodeling came in last fall, that contract amount of six hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars was quite a bit less than anticipated it was gonna be. We were fortunate to get very good bids. And so there was some money left over and, uh, one of the things that was said to us at our mill after that happened was, perhaps we ought to look at other modifications in the jail if we could do within the context of, context of that one point two million. One of the things we did was to look at an extensive remodeling of the, uh, the holding in the booking area over on the east side of the second floor. And it was decided that the cost of that would probably exceed, take the budget up beyond the one point two million. And at that time, um, Sheriff's Department came to us and said, perhaps the best use for these funds would be to add extra cameras in the jail. And that's what, what we've been working on ever since is the idea of increasing the number of cameras, not only in the jail itself, but down on the first floor of the law enforcement center. And I think the idea is for, uh, security and safety preservation, as I understand it. But anyway, that's, that's sort of the background of this request. Uh, we intended to try to get those additional cameras as a change order to the original contract and then, um, then we learned from Dennis that, uh, we're not able to write a substantial change order to that original contract and that, that in order to do something of the magnitude that, that is desired here, we have to send it out for bids of this second project. And so that's, that's the basis of this request here, to authorize us to, to do the design work required, to send the RFP out or the specifications out to, to get the additional cameras. The, the danger here is that we come down to the end down there, available to date, there's a number there right in the middle that pays two hundred and ninety-one thousand some dollars. If you remember, there was a contingency allowance of seventy thousand dollars that was written into the original contract. So that number is included in that two hundred and ninety-one thousand dollars. That is theoretically the amount of money that to this point has not been committed. The danger here is that a substantial amount of that may have to be committed to some of these other items that are listed down below that we don't know about yet. And so if we, if we come to a situation where we wanna add seventy-six cameras or however many cameras, we may find out that we don't have enough money to do the other work that's absolutely necessary. So what we propose to do is to bid the cameras in increments so that you could take ten or fifteen or twenty and then actually there is another sheet here that describes those increments. Uh, I think you've all received this also. Tell me if that's true. Okay, all right. Regina presented this to you last week, that's what I thought. That's our intent, to divide the proposal for cameras up into one, two, three, four, five different increments so that-
Well, I, I wasn't privy to all the means. But the cameras came in so high. I want to say it was up to twenty-five thousand, it came to two hundred thousand.
Yeah.
So that puts the whole project in jeopardy now. I mean, if you do the cameras, then you can't do the work that's scheduled to begin.
That's possible there. One of the possible advantages of doing this as a separate bid is we both get a better price for the cameras. But that's not a guarantee.
You know, in some place I saw that it would be more expensive because the other work was being completed in the, I think, was that, remember you just added, you said on there that it's more expensive for an after this, the work has been done.
Well, when we, when we originally made the request for that change order for the cameras, the idea was to get the new cameras tied in with the ones that we'd already purchased and hopefully make it coordinate more easily. That's what you're talking about, and that's true. This, that timeline has gone by now. So whatever we do now is going to be a separate package. And in order to coordinate it with the existing, with what's, you know, the new cameras that are already committed, there's going to, there could be an additional cost, that is true.
So if we bid it out, we don't have to accept any of it?
That's right.
So until we know what it looks like, can't really rule it out?
That's correct. What, what I would recommend, and this is a chance to, what I would recommend is bidding the cameras. And what, what I don't want to see happen is that we have cameras A, cameras B over here, and they're not coordinated. That's what we were trying to avoid in the first place. I think in issuing this as a new specification in a new bid, we almost have to say, you have to provide these cameras and these cameras only. That's going, that's going to limit the bids, and it's going, it's probably going to jack the prices up a little bit, but you have to have that coordination.
However, we might get locals to jump in.
I would hope so, if they're qualified. In the original bidding for the project last fall, there wasn't anybody that submitted locally that was considered qualified to provide those. It may or may not happen.
Well, to me, so this list here, Bob, I know the cameras are really, really important, but you know, a lot of this stuff here is really, really important too. You're talking about the duct work and the Sally Port.
We can't, we can't not do that.
We've got to get that stuff.
That's correct.
Lock on doors, that kind of thing.
And so really, the cameras have to be relegated to what's left over.
Yeah.
Only thing is, we don't know what's going to be left over. And so what Regina was prepared to tell you here was, perhaps it wouldn't be, as long as we've already passed the deadline for coordinating it in the original job, maybe it wouldn't be all that bad to delay this for a month or something and wait and see if we can identify some of those other costs. I don't know whether that's going to happen within that time.
Well, the other part, we've got thirty-five thousand. Is that the architect's piece or these collections?
Part of it's ours and part of it's, part of it's for the electrical and part of it's for the, for the security. And so, and they're broken down there, Murray.
But that's what I'm trying to figure out.
Yeah. They're broken down there on that sheet. The total is thirty-five thousand.
Right, and to add the seventy thousand, and that's a contingency fund, to the two twenty-one, that's not very prudent on our part.
I don't, I don't understand.
Do you mean to have the available date to look at that? Because it's not really.
Yeah, it's not available because that is contingency if the other things run, costs run over again, so we're eliminating that.
The seventy thousand is included in that six eighty-eight up above.
I don't think it should be. It should be remain.
It is though, it was written in the original contract.
George. A little bit here, the six eighty-eight, six eleven includes a contingency of seventy thousand.
Right, right.
Okay, of that, so the seventy thousand shouldn't be added on the bottom. Really, you've got one point two million minus nine forty-three, and that's assuming you do spend all the contingency, so you really only got two fifty-six left. Actually, you've got a little bit more because of the fourteen thousand, seven twenty-six, a change order come out of that contingency. We didn't add fourteen thousand on the six eighty-eight, that fourteen comes out of that seventy thousand contingency, I believe.
Yeah, all right.
So really, you've got two fifty-six plus probably fourteen thousand, and that's assuming you spend the rest of the contingency. Can I agree with that, Bob?
Yeah, more or less.
Yep. So just to clarify, you've got two ninety-one.
I'm not a numbers guy. More or less. It was about two hundred and seventy thousand total. Yeah.
Bob, I have a question, I guess. If, if we do delay the camera bidding process, in my understanding though, that we would be able to run the conduit as if we were going to have the addition of, what was it, seven cameras or whatever it was?
Yeah, the conduit has to be run.
But we can get all the infrastructure ready?
But isn't the conduit part of the whole total bid?
Yeah, the conduit is, the conduit is part of the electrical requirement.
Okay. The, the cameras are the least expensive thing.
Yeah, that's true.
Don't go to it.
Because you, you've got ground masonry over there to run all this stuff through. That's where a large part of the cost is going to be.
Well, I guess where I'm going with this is, let's say you, you run all the conduit for the, how many other cameras are, this is the addition of seventy. And then all that money is spent, and you only have enough money to buy half the number of cameras. At some point in time down the road, can you add the other half of the cameras?
Yeah, you, you could add them.
Then those, does that?
If we take them, you'd have to, you'd have to another project.
Yeah, it'd have to be over a year or two later, though. If you get too close, so consider it part of this project, even though you spaced out six months or a year, it's going to be part of the total project. So you'd have to space out over a timeframe that qualified to be a brand-new project.
And you probably put into, from compatibility, the cameras be compatible once you.
They change so fast. They strike out, dated by the time you do it, a year and a half, two years now.
That's why, if we're going to do this, we want to do it in, in increments of these groups, so they are coordinated at least among the groups.
So you think you're going to have more information about the unknown list in a month?
That's optimistic, Mark. It may not happen.
I see they're working over there today.
Yeah, they're working over there, but they've got a long ways to go. And they're, the, the, one of the biggest things I think that we're going to find, number one, is when they, when they do that examination of those doors, we may get quite a bit of information about existing doors that need replacement parts. That's one of them. The other big one, in my opinion, is going to be when they start to tear out Sally Port Six, because there is apparently some duct work up above the ceiling in there that was not shown in the original documents, and it's not going to work with the mechanical systems the way they're designed, so there's going to be some changes up in there once the ceiling comes down. Sally Port Six is one of the last things that's going to be done in the project. So there's going to be something that's coming from that. The other one is, who knows about the wiring? Everybody feels that the wiring should be adequate and should be intact, but we, we know that there are deficiencies in the way everything is operating over there. We're assuming that it's in the panels, but there could be some in the wire rack too, and, and we are simply not going to know that until those new panels are being installed, and that's going to be one of the last things in the project. So it's not all going to happen in thirty days, but we might have some knowledge of it.
I think they're seeing right now that in the panels, some of the wiring is brittle. What they're going to have to do to replace that, I have no idea. And one of the things that I just want to bring up so that you guys understand a little bit, is on these cameras, when they do the screenshots for the controls, these are all cameras here. So if we add these cameras later on, we're going to have to new, do new control screen panels and run all of the electrical for each touch, because this operates every little camera. And so, you know, it's, it's a, it kind of a snowball effect. If we don't do this, then, you know, something else is going to happen. And so when we're talking about these seventy-six cameras, there's a lot to it. Jackie's idea as far as to run the conduit and stuff and put the cameras later on, you know, that's definitely an option, but we need to think about that we're going to be replacing control panels again. And I just, I'm, I want you guys to know, I don't think that's a great idea. That's more money that we shouldn't be spending. We should spend it on the front end.
Let me add, do we agree with you?
Okay.
There are so many dollars that you can spend.
And I understand that too. I just, you know, with these control panels and that, I just want you guys to know, because you're not over there every day.
And I forgot about the control.
And, and so I just, I'm just trying to remember certain things that I think you guys should be aware of.
No, and we appreciate that. It could be that the number of cameras is just going to have to shrink down.
And I think you've got.
What Bob was saying, if you have a plan, you see E and E, we can pick from what's there.
Trying.
That's right, I like that plan too.
And you know, Sheriff Drew talked about last week on the cameras as far as litigation. Our temporary holding is just a terrible time bomb. That's where we truly need cameras. And when we're talking about these seventy-six cameras, and I think some of it is, you think, gosh, that sounds like a huge amount, but we have so many hidden areas in the jail because of the way it's designed. We're, if we put a camera at one end, it's not catching a corner that we need to be able to see, and the inmates know where those hidden areas are. And so that's where we need to be able to expose and show as much area as we possibly can. And when we looked at putting cameras, that's what we tried to think about, is we stood in, in the pod areas, and we looked at where the hidden areas are. Because of the big pillars of how it was structured, they can get around there, and we can't see what's going on. And even when you're outside in the dayroom area, when we're looking in, there's, there's areas that we can't see. So we need those cameras to help the safety, not only for the officers, but for the inmates, and so we can see what's going on.
So as you bid it out, there'll be priority areas, like booking, for instance, would be, if you only have so much money, that's where you.
That, that's.
Bid it out that way?
I was looking at the list from last week. There could be a possibility, I don't know if you agree with this or not, but like the twelve additional cameras in the main lobby and the courtrooms, that could maybe be done later? Because I mean, jail hallways is a priority, temporary holding cells is a priority, the dayroom is a priority, and maybe even the seven additional cameras in the multipurpose room, maybe we could run the conduit but not put them in.
What you really got to do is go through those five different.
Right.
Absolutely. We're one through five.
Which is not our job.
No.
No, it isn't.
You guys got enough on your plate without that.
I like to, I personally like to see us go ahead with the, with the process of putting a bid together, because that's going to take a while.
Yes, it is.
I thought we did that last week, though. I thought, I thought we authorized, you know, that last week to put that bid together for the cameras.
And Regina didn't understand that, so we.
No, because we wanted to know.
Yeah, I think, I think that's the reason for this sheet now.
Didn't we all first go to an architect, though?
I thought we did.
And today, it was supposed to be the architect piece?
They were not, they were not going to do any work until you do A, five A, approve, pay the architects, up to thirty-five thousand more, before they'd actually put in the work. Now, they've already, and this was going to say, they've already put in twenty-nine-hundred dollars, ten, two thousand nine or ten dollars worth of work already. So you see on their RML to date, twenty-seven hundred, WPE to date, two hundred and ten dollars.
The consultants have also done a considerable amount of work too.
Okay, so there's actually money, there's, services that should be paid for, they've done, but the board hasn't authorized it yet, that's part of the thirty-five thousand. But they were not going to do the RFPs until the board did five A, or agreed to the number for five A.
So if we need a month, we're talking six weeks to get the RFP up.
Yeah, oh, it's going to take longer than that, Mark. Well, more than two weeks for us to do it.
So if we gave you approval now to put together an RFP, it's probably not.
It's probably going to be in a month, that's right.
And then we may know more.
We might.
Then you need to, if you're going to do that, you need to authorize up to thirty-five, or whatever number you two all agree to, before they're going to do any work.
So we need to approve this thirty-five thousand?
Up to.
Up to thirty-five thousand.
That's what I would ask today.
I would move it. You've got to.
Wait a second here.
Yeah, we've got to.
Five B from last week's meeting says this, to approve the issue of the RFP for the LBC security, security five O.
We didn't authorize payment.
Okay, so we're issuing, we're authorized payment, okay.
Is there a motion?
I did make the motion. We authorized that thirty-five thousand dollar payment for, so it would be going on.
Up, up to thirty-five thousand.
Up to thirty-five thousand.
Discussion. All of us in favor?
Aye.
Close?
I'm saying.
Motion's here.
So B, we did last week.
That's what I thought we did.
They just weren't going to do any work until the fee was settled. Now they're going to start the process.
Just an additional thirty-five thousand?
Yes.
So now you'll start the RFP, okay.
And as far as, well, we misunderstand, everybody wants cameras here. But we are locked into one point two million.
We can't go with that.
You cannot supplement that one.
We understand. And that's, that's why we may have to make some priority choices.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, you apparently didn't do a good job in the planning of this.
That happens sometimes. Good morning. First item I have is approval of the plans for reinforced concrete box culvert replacement project. We're proposing a twin eight-by-eight culvert on Two Hundred Eightieth Street. This is the culvert that we had to close unexpectedly last week, the greenwood structure that had, had a mudsill-supported bridge span over top of it. That mudsill failed and dropped the beam bridge down on top of the greens, the greenwood structure. We're not ready to set a letting date on this yet. We're negotiating right-of-way for the project with the upstream and downstream landowners. A small amount of right-of-way will be needed, so I'll be coming back to you with a letting date at a future meeting. But at least this way, we've got the plans ready to go, and as quickly as possible, we will get the letting dates set. Ben started meeting with a landowner last week, same guy on both sides of the road.
And this was one of the bridges between the program, it was a new funding.
No, this is not in the new funding stream. This was under our old program. This one was already in the 2014 program, even before we got the one point three million.
But not quite this soon.
Not quite this soon, no. We did not expect to have to close the existing structure at this point in time. We were going to let this project this summer, it's just that now it's become more of an emergency.
Motion, motion of re-planting project LB.
Discussion. All of us in favor?
I vote, motion carries.
Everybody, yeah, this requires everybody's signature on it. Our next item on the agenda is consider approval of the completion certificate for project LB eleven dash one. This was a culvert on Hundred Forty-Eighth Street. Work was done by Nelson and Rock.
More motion. Motion to renew plans for the project LB.
Thank you. Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Close. Motion carries.
Everybody. Yeah, this requires everybody's signature on it. Our next item on the agenda is consider approval of the completion certificate for project LB eleven dash one. This was a culvert on Hundred Forty-eth Street. Work was done by Nelson and Rock. The project is completed and open to traffic. We eliminated a bridge that had been posted, I believe, twelve tons.
Can we move it?
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Close. Motion carries.
This one requires only the chair's signature. The second one is completion certificate for a new structure on Ida Avenue, just around the corner from one on Hundred Forty-eth.
Move it.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Close. Motion carries.
Our next item is, we have a... Consider approval of completion certificate on project, or pavement marking project for 2013.
Can we move it?
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Close. Motion carries.
You hadn't moved me up yet, Karen. That was... Now we're there. Next is consider approval of L.A. Carlson's contract for replacing a structure on... I don't have that down there. Let me find it again. I want to say it's Lennox Avenue. This would be north of Highway Twenty, southeast of Pearson.
Move it.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Close. Motion carries.
Tag these for Larry. I have two copies of the bond coming as well, Larry. The final item I have today is to consider a request for funding secondary road department work at the Woodbury County Fair. I sent off a quick memo that hopefully you got today. This is a problem I've been grappling with since I found out we were doing this as a gratis deal for the fairgrounds. As the second page of the memo shows, there are certain things that secondary road funds can be expended upon. Doing work at the fair isn't one of them. But they are dependent upon our services there. This kind of evolved from our project where we had guys who were volunteering their time. They'd take vacation, they'd go in and work, use county equipment, and build the motocross track. I think they'd prepare for a tractor pull, they'd prepare for a demolition derby, and a couple of other grandstand events that are going on out there. What's that?
Rodeo.
Rodeo, yeah, that's the one I was grappling for. And the motocross in particular requires quite a bit of work. We have a wage and hour issue where if they're operating our equipment, they need to be paid as if they're on county time. Essentially, they're performing work for the county. I tried to get equipment from local dealers out there so that we could get our guys back into that volunteer mode. The problem is, the motocross requires so much time and equipment. It requires three trucks in addition to the motor grader and end loader to get it done. It's a tremendous amount of dirt that our guys move in the course of twenty-four hours to build and twenty-four hours to tear down. And I think also, it's evolved into a paid program now. We just don't have a lot of volunteers. The only volunteer I've got is to get the track ready for the demolition derby on Sunday. That guy's coming in on Saturday to do that work on his own time with the equipment we borrowed from Murphy. The fair board is giving Murphy some free advertising out there and showcasing some of their equipment. So there is a little bit of trade-off there. I started working on this with Dave Amick and now working on it with Don out there and trying to come up with something better. It would be nice if we could get this monkey off of our back as a department totally. I mean, we pull our staff for the better part of a week, at least. A subset of our staff from Mobile who's out there doing this work and takes us away from the type of work that we need to do out there. Looking at the cost of this, the board did pay for it. Reimburse our department two years ago. It, I think, was just right around two thousand dollars. I'm thinking not to exceed twenty-five hundred. We can get this done at our current rates on equipment. We also aren't providing two loaders and a motor grader this year. We're only providing one loader for that couple of days it takes to build and then tear down. I'd like to continue to work on this to see if we can't maybe get a contractor who's looking for some goodwill work for the county. I'm not sure we'll find that guy either. Those folks are already running on pretty lean profits. But if we can't get that done to where we get a volunteer or somebody looking to do it, I think we need to get the fair to look at this as an ongoing part of their budget next year so that there is planning for it. And I'm not having to come here and beg you folks for it at the last minute.
And the other part of that is, just to use your equipment out there for your personnel without board approval. And then it's not secondary roads money. We're in a bad situation here. So we'll have to have this conversation at the fair to work it out.
I would like to see that happen. And, you know, I'd attend their budget hearing if I could be of help.
But right now, any money out of the fair out and not create any problems. So what we need is a motion to allow expense up to twenty-five hundred dollars and specify verbal funds. Second. Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Close. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mark. Now considering the individual, any unit, any individual and/or group make a presentation. Is there anyone...
Chairman, I've got our cafe. I guess we had a little bit of an email exchange. The board wants to go out for RFPs. We use the same process we used last time, which I think we did. Email for the website, Facebook. I put some of those sections here. If there's an anxiety, I took a lot of that.
You know, I was, I thought it was time to just give it up. There are lots of people out there willing to do this, and it doesn't cost us a dime. They're going to give us some money. The rent always went, we charged two fifty last night.
Did you?
A year.
A year?
A year. You know, they said they have... I did.
I guess they're going to give it another opportunity, as long as it doesn't cost us any money. We've made an investment down here with equipment, whatever, and I don't think we should expend any more money on that thing. They can, if they're proposal, consider it.
What do we have, free, interested?
I'm not sure. Possibly. I was contacted by one gal to help me with that. Karen wants to send her an RFP. You said maybe there was somebody else.
Yeah.
Well, you just handled it, I think.
My track record was a...
Well, your track record is good, it's fine.
Are we at the part where anyone can make comments? Or...
Yeah, go ahead.
Well, I just wanted to say, you know, a lot of things come out in the wash. I wanted to commend the board. It's hard, you know, saying no to somebody. It's hard holding the line on the budget. It's not an easy job. I don't know why any of you filled out the paperwork to take this job. But there's been a lot of bad press and a lot of people yelling and fighting. And maybe in the wash, everything comes out in the end. But I just want, I just wanted to commend the board.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else which they are?
Who would be Jennifer, she's not over there. Oh, we have to go to the executive.
I'm going to reset the whole session.
We just can't keep a cafe in business. Can't keep a cafe in business. They were all nice people, too.
You know, that's the thing about a business, going in there. You have to think you're going to do better than the person before. You have to try to do sometimes better than the other person. A journey. You need to want to do it more than the last person. A lot of businesses will never be sold in that case. The next guy comes in and says, "Oh, yeah, that's failing, but I'm making all of it." It's on vacation?
Well, and it's not like what it was supposed to. If you think you can do better than the last fifteen people that tried and failed to do this, so... But now they're really...
Who must have forgot.
They always have good food down there, everything, so...
Maybe these last people are pretty nice, so I don't know.